Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dan Carney. It is, once again, my distinct privilege to be able to serve as chairman of this Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. This is a meeting of that board being held today, Thursday, June the 12th, 2025, at 12:30 PM in the community room in the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located at 225 College Park Drive, Texas, to act and consider upon a motion agenda. Attending deliberations today with us is Dr. Lila Morris, Dr. Chad Dixon, Dr. Robert Marlett, Mary Beth Denny, G.B. Bailey, and shortly we will have G. Thomas Vick Jr. join us once he's sworn in. At this time, I call the meeting to order. I call upon Mr. Baker. Would you help us with the invocation?
I'd be happy to, sir. Thank you. Please bow with me. Well, we're thankful to you today, again, for the season. We're thankful to you for all the students you brought our way, and now that many of them are at a time of rest. We pray for their safety during the summer and that you'll continue to watch over our college. Thank you for our new board member coming on today. And for all of our board members, please redeem the time that they're spending away from their families and their businesses. In your name we pray. Amen.
If you're able, please rise and I'll lead to the place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please proceed. Ms. Worley, do we have any one who has signed up for a public comment today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Item number three is the consideration and form of trustees and swearing in of newly-appointed trustees. This time, I'd like to ask Mary Beth Denny and Mr. G. Thomas Vick Jr. to come forward. Although we've already executed the proper legal instruments for you to be placed into office on this board, we're going to perform it now for the benefit of the audience. Mr., we're going to do it simultaneously, Mr. Vick. We'll try not to do it out of order, okay?
Stay tuned.
The open office for your trustee positions. In the name of by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Tom Vick, am
Mary Beth Denny.
To solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Weatherford College Board of Trustees of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Do you so swear? I do. Congratulations.
Thank you.
President Farmer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. Congratulations to Dr. Shannon Idojaga and the entire academic services team. Weatherford College is set to launch seven new academic programs this fall, marking the largest academic expansion in the college's distinguished history. Duane Duratt, Dean of Fine and Performing Arts at Weatherford College, recently received the Legends of Jazz Award from Salmon Center for the Arts. Duratt was honored as the Jazz Educator category for his 50 years of music at W.C. We'll be hearing from Dean Duratt here in just a few minutes.
Just one moment.
Thank you to Student Services and to all who played a role in the recent W.C. commencement ceremony. We celebrated the largest graduating class in W.C. history, and the ceremony was spectacular. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Shane McGee, our catering cook, has resigned effective 5/23/25. Nina Mantiotis, our phlebotomy director, has retired effective 8/31/25. Suzie Jerry, our program director for substance abuse, has retired effective 8/31/25. Lisa Dahlstrom has resigned from Weatherford College Wise County Workforce Specialist position effective 5/28/25. Dr. Lauren Tidwell, the dean of academics, has resigned effective 6/20/25. And Sam Cody, our coordinator and asset management for Technology Services, has retired effective 7/31/25. We thank Shane, Nina, Suzie, Lisa, Lauren, and Sam for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment report. As of June 2nd, the summer 2025 year-to-date enrollment was 2,309 students compared to 2,083 in the summer 2024 semester, an increase of 10%. The fall 2025 year-to-date enrollment is 3,023 students compared to 2,289 in the fall 2024 semester at this year-to-date, an increase of 27.6%. Mr. Chair, that concludes the president's report.
Thanks, President Farmer. Item number five on the posted agenda is the consent agenda with financial reports. Those items, A through H, have been properly posted and are listed there. Does any member of the board have a comment or question about any of those items before I entertain a motion? Hearing none? Do I have a motion? Yes, sir.
Dr. Farmer, is there anything in the policy change you would like to highlight for us in particular?
No, sir. Fairly routine, nothing that really stood out. We do have Mr. Paul Williams here with us today that could answer any detailed questions if you'd like to pull that from the consent agenda.
No, 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 no. I've read through it, and I was just curious if you had any thoughts.
No, sir. It's been vetted by our human resources as well as our executive cabinet before we brought it to you, and so that we have no concerns.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the posted consent agenda as has been posted? Now, a second. Dr. Farmer, okay. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. Appears to be unanimous. Go through. Item number six on the posted agenda is consideration and possible action of competitive sealed proposals on construction at large at risk for student union project number RFP 0725. Dr. Cantrell, I understand that you have something to tell us about.
I do. I do. In February 13th, we came to you all, and you authorized us to go out for the procurement method that we would use for building the new student services facilities. And we advertised the RFP for those. We had three that came to the pre-bid. We had only two that sent in the proposals themselves. They were core engineers and imperial construction. After reviewing, a committee was chosen and recommended, when looking at it, the fixed cost of $52,000 for the pre-construction services, a fixed cost per month for fixed general conditions as defined by sample document, standard form of agreement, and shall be $59,721. Percentage construction cost for construction phase would be 2.5 with the low proposal. After looking at all other quality of companies, their experience, we're just pretty much flat. I think we gave the rating criteria to you all and where you could review those. At this time, we're recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation from the Construction Manager Risk Evaluation Committee on award of the CMA services to the Student Union Project to Imperial Construction and authorize Dr. Todd Allen Farmer to execute the final agreement. Are there questions that you have specifically, any of this?
Anyone have any inquiries you want to put forward at this time? Can you explain the extreme difference in the two bids?
Those are their fixed costs, the fee that they're charging. There's not any difference in, it's spelled out very plainly, what they will provide for those services. I think it comes to the difference of how much they want a job or how much they don't.
Right. Thank you.
Because, you know, we looked at their past experience, the company, I mean, the businesses they'd done work with before, and they were all comparable. The two companies were top-rated companies, and we were just very pleased with the price that came in on this.
Thank you, doctor. This time, I would entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation from Construction Manager at Risk RFP Evaluation Committee on award for the CMAR services for the Student Union Project to Imperial Construction Incorporated and authorize Dr. Todd Allen Farmer to execute the final agreement. Do I hear such a motion? Ms. Lila, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. With all in favor, please raise your hand at this time. Appears to be unanimous vote, and so approved. Item number seven on the posted agenda reads consideration and possible action of the August 2025 board meeting date revision and recommendations. Dr. Cantrell.
I believe it was last month, they came to you all with a calendar schedule, and I pointed out at that time that there might have to be some adjustments because of the tax rate adoption. So, we looked at it and have reworked it somewhat from the way we've done it before, but in order to get everything finalized with our tax rate and all that by the end of August, this is what we're proposing. We're proposing to do the budget workshop, which is normally done on a Tuesday, and we would come back on a Thursday, but we're proposing to do the budget workshop at 12:30 on August 7th. Then we'd come back in the regular meeting. It shouldn't take over an hour. Then the regular board meeting would take place immediately afterwards at 1:30. At that time, a proposed tax rate could be met, and then there's certain guidelines. I think you can't have a hearing or anything at least, I think it's 10 days, it probably says in there, seven days, I think, after that. So, we're proposing that we not touch that next week, and then on August 21st, we would come back for a public tax hearing and a called board meeting at that time to adopt the budget and the tax rate.
All right. Are there any comments or questions about those dates?
Trying to keep to the limit.
I will not be able to be here on August 7th. August the what?
7th.
7th, okay. Any other, any obvious conflicts that we have such that it would interfere with the quorum? Okay. Then the chair would entertain a motion to the effect that the Board of Trustees approve the dates and times presented for the required August 2025 board meetings, those being August the 7th, 2025, at 12:30 PM for the budget workshop, August 7th, 2025, at 1:30 PM for the regular board meeting, and August the 21st, 2025, at 12:30 PM for the public tax hearing and called board meeting. So, do I have a motion to approve that? Dr. Dixon, do I have a second? Is there a second? Hello? All in favor, please raise your hand. It appears unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item that we have on the posted agenda is item number eight, the fourth section from Dr. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Included in your packet, as usual, is our agenda item 8A, the Wise County Academic and Student Services Update. You've also been provided in item 8B with the proposed 2025-2026 budget presentation. Dr. Cantrell and her team will be bringing you a more formal presentation next month. Dr. Cantrell, is there anything that you wanted to briefly say this month?
I would just like to say that the whole college pulled together on this budget and working toward a budget that would meet the strategic goals of the college. The budget is increased by $4 million at this time, but there are still many things. We haven't even got our appropriations figure yet from the state. They tell us that we'll receive them tomorrow, but there will be lots of changes that will take place in the next month. Not a lot. We've tried to formalize, and we've got money in contingency, hopefully, to cover any potential raises or anything that's unforeseen at this time. But I'm very pleased at how everyone has pulled together on this, and in this, there's a lot of the new building incorporated in as debt service, and so we're moving along with that, and along with the rating, bond rating will be coming week after next.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. Moving to item 8C, we have the W.C. Award presented by Dr. Ebay for the most promising place to work. Dr. Ebay, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Farmer. Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board, on May 26, 2025, I had the utmost privilege to represent Farmer in Austin at the NYSOD Conference. During this conference, we were presented with the most promising places to work in community colleges. The National Institute for Staff and Organizational Development, NYSOD, in collaboration with Divorce, a magazine, this magazine right here in my hand, started a survey in 2014 to figure out how place staff and faculty members are with their institution, with their respective institutions. The methodology is a comprehensive analysis of data collected from annual survey distributed to all NYSOD member institutions. There are over 1,100 community colleges in the United States. Twenty-two were chosen for this award in 2025, and Weatherford College is one of them. The survey consists of 60 items organized into 10 categories or sections. The top five promising practices cited are, as follows. Number one, recognition of good work. How institution leadership recognizes and celebrates good work by their staff and faculty? Number two, commitment to meeting the needs of community. How institutions live up to the mission of serving the local community? Number three, invest in development of faculty and staff. How institutions invest in professional development of faculty and staff to enhance upon what they do? Number four, offer new faculty and staff orientation. How institutions offer well-organized structural formal orientation to help stimulate their new employees? And finally, number five, technology integration for equity. How institutions prioritize technology integration for all faculty, staff, and students to help them succeed in their respective jobs? Mr. Chairman, I present the award to you and thank you for providing us the opportunity and making Weatherford College one of the most promising places to work. I thank you.
On behalf of everyone who works at this outstanding institution, we accept this award with much gratitude and much thanks. It's a wonderful place to be associated with, and it sure is nice to have all of you here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before we move to agenda item 5D, I would like to recognize Dr. Ebay for his work in leading this endeavor, along with the executive cabinet and our entire team on that very distinguished award. So, Dr. Ebay, thank you so much for your efforts to that end.
Thank you, doctor.
Moving to agenda item 8D, we have our Fine Arts Presentation Report with Dean Duane Duratt and Dr. Song. And while they are coming up, I will just publicly state that about seven years ago, there was this pipe dream idea of having an international piano competition in Weatherford, Texas, which sounded pretty far-fetched at the time. And Dr. Song and others worked to get that program off of the ground, and last year, we had, I'll let her give you the exact numbers, but they're staggering. It was over 200 participants from 25 countries around the globe. Those finalists got on airplanes and flew from their respective countries to Weatherford, Texas to compete in the finals here at Weatherford College. And that pipe dream is now a very vibrant reality, thanks to the work of Dr. Song and the entire team over there. So, Dean Duratt, Dr. Song, the floor is yours.
What's important is whether we deliver the message we want to convey. Have to play here sincerely, just only think about the music.
Everybody is so interesting and so accomplished. Each person, individual, all together, quite a delight, but a problem for us because we had to make these distinctions. So, then you ask yourself, well, what are we listening for? What do we want from a performance?
The young students in all the major conservatories know about this competition now. They really do. It's on the map.
It really does take, not a village, but at least a small army to put one of these things on successfully, and it was beautifully run, beautifully organized.
Thank you so much for organizing this. It's such a great two days here, and everything was so organized, and I feel very welcome here.
Hands down, one of the most organized competitions I've been to. Like, you, I think Dr. Song, she did a great job, and everything else she helped with her.
Dr. Song, President Farmer, the entire Weatherford community, thanks for putting this wonderful competition together. You are doing something right here at Weatherford.
Wish all of you could have been there. It was an incredible event when you see this talent, and this is what comes out of 207 applicants and from around the world, 25 countries. And so, Dr. Song's vision is a product of this point. And we're going to talk a little bit about that vision and where it needs to go. We think that with a vision, a vision has to grow. You just can't stay right there, and you're going to end up with a very stagnant event, no matter how good it is. And so, we'll talk about it in just a minute. Okay, this is a little bit of our growth. But first off, if you're not aware of it, three of our, this year's Clivern entrants were involved of the, I'm sorry, Weatherford College people were winners, were in the Clivern this year. Carter Johnson was one of the six finalists, and we just were sure he was going to win this thing, but he didn't. But just to be one of the six finalists is incredible. 2023, he was first place at Weatherford College. A year ago, he won the Dublin International Piano Competition. So, his growth, in a sense, started with Weatherford College and these competitions. This is a whole different world where these pianists, the pressure is incredible, every part of it is pressure, preparation is very intense. Jonathan Memora, he was one second place this year at Weatherford, and he was picked for the Clivern, and he didn't make the semifinals. As Mr. Wu, who was a 2021 finalist at Weatherford, but he didn't make it pass into the semifinals. But as Dr. Farmer said, 207 pianists from 25 countries entered this year's competition. Twelve finalists performed at W.C. on April 26th. And our juries, Dr. Song is so wise with picking these juries because these hopeful pianists were attracted to this kind of talent, these artists, these piano instructors, and they're known around the world. And also, this is, we just were looking, or Dr. Song was, and she put in an AI, and it said it's Weatherford College International Piano Competition, among the fastest-growing and most impactful piano competitions in the U.S. And that's from artificial intelligence. I don't know where they got it, but there it is. Okay, and as I mentioned, the competition is evolving. It's got to evolve, and here's our vision, and it certainly, it can't happen next year, but within the next two years. What we would like to see at Weatherford College is a three-day format. Right now, we're one day, and it's a long day. But what we would like to see is if we have 12 semifinalists and at some point, four or six finalists, and they perform, much like the Clivern, they perform concertos with an orchestra. And on the third day, on the first day semifinals, on the second day, the finalists rehearse with the orchestras, and on the third day, the final performance, and then they're chosen. And of course, this all increases with money, and for your orchestra, your judges, everybody stays longer, accommodations and meals. We don't pay the pianists, the contestants. We do give them a stipend, but it's very small considering their expense of getting here. But the judges, we do have to take care of. We're going to start looking at grants, donors, and the current budget that we will have to work with on that. The donors, and by the way, we have over close to three-quarters of a million dollars of pianists, and donors pay for those pianists. So, we're very lucky to have that kind of support, and we hope that we can continue that. We're going to be looking for sources, and we're going to be collaborating and meeting with the mayor of Weatherford to explore citywide promotion. If you look at the Clivern program, you'll see where the Clivern supports Fort Worth, Fort Worth supports the Clivern. We want to do that with Weatherford. We want to see what we can do in the city where it promotes all of the things, and they help us with this. And so, we're be interested to see how that meeting goes. Paul has been very supportive for it, and we're hoping we can make some things happen. And of course, this year, student volunteers were something we had to have. And let me tell you, seven years ago, we probably planned this thing in two months and made it happen. Of course, we only had 34 or 5 contestants. Now, it's a monster. It's a 12-months thing, and it takes every bit of energy and everything from a staff to make this happen. And so, we have to have involvement with community volunteers. So, Dr. Song, I think you're up.
Distinguished Weatherford College Board Trustees, members, and President Dr. Farmer, it is an honor to speak with you today about the remarkable about the remarkable journey of the Weatherford College International Piano Competition. Just seven years ago, Weatherford College International Piano Competition began as a vision. Today, it stands as one of the fastest-growing and most respected competitions in the United States and beyond. Students from top conservatories across the United States, Europe, and Asia now know the name Weatherford College. As our 2025 doctor Spencer Meyer from Indiana University said, young students in all the major conservatories know about the Weatherford College Competition. It is on the map. Just this week, while serving on the jury at the Piano Texas International Piano Festival, one of the most prestigious piano festivals in the nation, I heard the same affirmation from other renowned professors. It is on the map. But Weatherford College International Piano Competition hasn't just made it onto the map. It has positioned Weatherford College on the international cultural stage. And today, I'd like to share how we got here and where we are headed next. Our journey began with just one playable piano and a bold dream. Today, Weatherford College is proud to be an all-time school and the first spiro学校 in the states of Texas. When we launched the competition in 2019, Weatherford College was virtually unknown in the international piano world. We began with 24 local young students. This year, we welcomed over 200 highly-qualified applicants from 25 different countries, including some of the most promising young pianists of our time, established professional musicians who already serve as university faculty, and internationally acclaimed artists. We used to receive calls and emails asking, "Where is Weatherford?" But today, our jury includes world-class artists and living legends of the piano world as they not only know the Weatherford College International Piano Competition, they induce it to reach out to be part of it. Recent competition, Weatherford competition pianists have gone on to become winners and finalists in prestigious international piano competitions around the world, including the Beck Klavern International Piano Competition, the Chopin Competition, and the Lys International Piano Competition in Europe. That's the kind of transformation we've achieved through vision, persistence, and purpose. How we did it? This didn't happen by chance. It happened because of vision, trust, and tireless effort. And because of the steadfast support of Dr. Farmer, Dean Durett, our foundation, our generous donors, and so many others. Also, thank you to Steinway Piano for your continued partnership. Back in 2019, we started with no data, no contacts, just a handful of young local pianists. Today, in 2025, we proudly welcome applicants from Argentina, Armenia, Australia, Canada, China, Cyprus, France, Finland, Greece, Hong Kong, India, Indonesia, Italy, Mexico, New Zealand, and the Philippines, Poland, Russia, South Korea, Spain, Taiwan, Ukraine, and the United Kingdom, the United States, Uzbekistan, and many more. To achieve this, I connected directly with schools, music institutions, educators, and organizations across six continents, including countries with limited internet access or unique digital platforms like China, Russia, Bangladesh, Indonesia, and Finland. One example, in our 2020 competition, we were able to invite a professor from the Moscow Conservatory in Russia as a judge, even though I had never met or been introduced to her before. Russia is a particularly challenging region for outreach as internet access is heavily restricted, and the Moscow Conservatory alone has nearly 100 piano faculty members. I carefully searched for each professor's information, reviewed public profile performances, and researched materials, and personally reached out. Through this work, we not only recruited outstanding participants, but also secured world-class judges, laying a strong foundation for our competition's international identity. Every outreach email was handpicked and sent personally, not blackmail, building genuine relationship with musicians and educators worldwide. Over seven years, this effort created a verified global database of over 10,000 contacts. Alongside this, we focused on building a strong social media presence. Our Facebook page has become one of the most actively updated and organized piano competition pages in the music community, sharing over 20,000 photos, posts, and videos globally over the past seven years. We launched targeted social media campaigns with thousands of posts of video and ads strategically timed to reach music schools, faculty network, and student communities around the globe. When the 2020 pandemic forced many competitions to cancel, WCIPC quickly adopted by pioneering a fully online format. This innovation turned crisis into opportunity and set a model for other competitions. Through consistent outreach, relationship-building, and innovative thinking, we built WCIPC from nothing and grew stronger through challenges. Today, WCIPC stands as a respected global competition. Next step for global expansion. What makes our competition truly unique? WCIPC is the only international piano competition of its kind founded by a community college and now recognized around the world. Online competition named after famous artists or composer or funded by major foundations, our competition proudly carries the name of its home, Weatherford College. But our purpose goes beyond recognition. Through Weatherford College International Piano Competition, we are building lasting global partnerships, connecting students, educators, and institutions in meaningful way. This is not just the growth of a competition. It's shaping a better connected world through music and education. We now carry the name of Weatherford College not only across Texas or the United States, but across continents. Weatherford College International Piano Competition is pipeline of global talent and also the international identity of Weatherford College. We create a map from a blank canvas, and now it's time to invite the world to join us on this journey. I now envision a future where the world comes to Weatherford College and Weatherford College reaches out to the world. Thank you.
So, what does that mean? For the last three years or more, we've been discussing and knowing there's a need for us to recruit. And we've talked to Dr. Farmer about this, and you know, he never just, he didn't feel the timing was right. I have a feeling that the timing is right for us to start recruiting in Korea. And here are the reasons why we are doing this. We need to recruit more advanced music students. And Korea is a talent hub. First off, if you noticed, the students, the pianists, the 12 finalists, they were all of Asian extent. Koreans, in our past students, Nury Han and Shailen Lee. Shailen left here with a full scholarship to TCU. She was at Weatherford for two years, and then from TCU, she got a scholarship to Eastman School of Music. This summer, I was very proud to write a letter of reference for her to be the rehearsal pianist for the Chicago Opera, and she got it. So, that is the quality of students we are looking for. 140 of the 25 Clivern applicants, 2025 Clivern applicants, came from China and Korea. Forty-four pianists were from the U.S., and of that 44, 22 of them were not born in the United States. And what is the problem? We, in Korea, and China, and Asia, there is a much more emphasis on hard work in the arts. Arts are way above sports, and it's different here. And there's nothing wrong with sports. But we definitely were looking for those pianists where they start young, they work hard, they know how to do it. I use Shailen as an example with other students. She was a gym rat. You go to a practice room, she was there. I would take other students, and I said, "Look, she's in there." And I said, "Come see me after your class." Their class was over, she was still in the practice room. They went to another class, they came back, she was still in the practice room. There's no secret to being good at music or anything, really, you practice. You just do it. And those students are taught to do it. So, this is the level of student that we're wanting to reach. And other Texas colleges are recruiting in Korea. Texas State, they have an annual piano festival, not a competition, but it's always been held in Georgetown. And this year, it's in Seoul, Korea. And in fact, they're there now. And I don't really know how it's set up. I'd like to find out more about it. But they're there. And also, Odessa College, now they're not recruiting music students, but they're recruiting students, and they're in Korea. And also, in 2023, Weatherford College, y'all approved it, and the Texas Higher Education Consortium Board approved a piano certificate at Weatherford College. We have not been able to get it going because we do not have the level, enough of the level of students that are required for that. Because what it is, this certificate, on your certificate is for students who want to compete, who need to audition for universities. And global recruitment strategy partners, please talk.
Over the past seven years, Weatherford College International Piano Competition has taught us how to build something from nothing and connect a local initiative to the world. Now, I believe it's time to apply that knowledge and strategy to recruit international students to Weatherford College. Number one, expand school and agency contacts. We will deepen our partnership with music high schools, academics, and universities across Korea. We plan to engage faculty directly on trust and provide Korean-linked materials to students, parents, and educators. We'll also use Korea's major platform with real testimonials from our Korean students and our competition pianists. And we'll host live Q&amp;A sessions to directly support interested families. Number two, build genuine community ties. We'll spotlight Korean students' success stories, share alumni interviews, and publish articles in the trusted Korean music journals and forums. We'll also distribute brochures at Korea's top piano competitions and academic events. Number three, auditions at Steinway Galleries. We'll host in-person auditions in collaboration with Steinway Galleries. We'll visit top music schools with targeted Korean-ledged materials, including a video introducing Weatherford College. Selected students will be considered for classical and jazz scholarship with complete program guidance provided. Number four, beyond music college wide outreach. While this initiative is rooted in the piano program, my goal goes beyond the music recruitment. I hope this effort benefits the entire Weatherford College finalists and entire Weatherford College community. I will host study of road information sessions that highlight all academic programs. And we'll actively explore university partnership for student exchange and future collaboration. So, Weatherford College continues to grow as global hub of opportunity. Lastly, I'd like to briefly share my personal journey regarding this presentation. I've always felt that my life has been gently guided by an invisible, delicate hand carrying me to where I am meant to be. Coming to the United States for my studies was one of those moments. My story began with a scholarship offered by a visiting professor from Texas Christian University while I was graduate student in Korea. That single opportunity reminded me that one moment can truly change the course of a life. And one of the most main reasons I chose TCU was that it was the very first and only all-time way school at that time in Texas. The idea of practicing and performing on the Steinway piano every day felt like a dream come true. Years later, when Weatherford College also became an all-time school, I was deeply moved. It felt as though my journey had come full circle. And then, I discovered something that, the very same week, I arrived in Texas in August 1998, Weatherford College's L-CAP Finals Center opened with its inaugural concert. The timing has always stayed with me. It felt like I was meant to be here to serve and to contribute something meaningful to Weatherford College. Now, with the remarkable growth of Weatherford College International Piano Competition, I feel called toward an even greater mission. With vision, purpose, and strong partnerships, I truly believe we are ready to step confidently onto the global stage. Again, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to share and for all your considerations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Song.
I would like to introduce the folks that are with us. Oliver Lucero from Steinway. And Steinway has been very supportive of us, and we've been very thankful to have that support. To finish this real quickly, just some of our recruitment strengths. You know most of this. Technology, one thing you might want to know is, our students are taught MIDI and Spero integration, and Mr. Sanders teaches that. And MIDI is something where if you sit down at a piano, if it's a Spero, you can actually have a choir behind you. Or you know, you can compose at the piano, and you have an orchestra behind you. You don't have to hire an orchestra. This is the kind of technology that we're able to work through those pianos. I think that's very helpful. I mean, it's a great tool for the composition and performance of our students. Just if we were to go, right now, American has a sale to go to Seoul, and it's $1,500. But I'm sure, you know, prices vary, $2,000 round trip. Hotels in Seoul are $200 to $350. And the ideal time, what we're thinking, and Dr. Song has helped us with this, is right now, we'd be late September to into October, and we hope to get to go in probably seven to 10 days, accounting travel and everything. So, if you have any questions, we also, Mr. Sanders is here, and we would like to, if you have anything you need to know or any question. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Duane. Appreciate it very much. We'll take all that into consideration and review it.
I would just like to say that we are so lucky to have Dr. Song as a full-time master pianist with Weatherford College. She has done an amazing job. I was privileged to be able to hear seven out of the 12 finalists at the competition. And I honestly don't know how they judge them. They're just... They're just, it's an amazing thing. I wish everybody would attend next year because it's an experience. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Lila, appreciate it very much. Thank you, Dwyane, thank you. I think that takes us down to agenda item number nine. And for that, we call upon Mr. Baker once again.
Yes, sir, thank you. Upcoming events for the next month. Speaking of fine arts, we have a couple of fine arts events this summer. Our summer stage program continues at the Alcac with Shakespeare's King Lear. That is this weekend through Sunday in the Alcac Fine Arts Center. There's a baseball camp coming up, there is a basketball camp coming up, there's a children's play coming up, July 12th and 13th. And of course, you're always welcome to come to our alumni luncheons. Next one will be July 14th.
Thank you very much, Brett, appreciate it. Item number 10, we're going to enter into a closed session to deliberate on any real property matters as well as employee matters. So we will now, it's now 1:21 P.M. We will go into closed session and return when we're finished.
Thank you for the motion. Do I have a second to the doctor's motion?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Appears to be a unanimous approval of that motion and second and it is so approved.
We are so excited.
President Carney, why don't you explain for a second what that means that we've accepted this and what happens next?
Well, probably the better person to address that is going to be Dr. President Farmer to tell us about what to remind folks of what this gift is and we are going through an inspection period that could be addressed where it's not accepted at this point. We're going to enter into an inspection period and do our due diligence to determine whether or not this is something that we should do. So for that clarification, I'll turn it over to President Farmer.
Yes, sir. We are looking at 16.35 acres located in Bridgeport, Texas, as previously stated, which includes a beautiful hospital facility as well as some other tracts of land. We are now, once this contract is executed later this afternoon, we will enter a 90-day period where we will do an environmental assessment of the facility and we will also do an internal assessment of what it will take to make that facility classroom-ready. And once we gather that information, we will bring that back to the Board of Trustees for further deliberation. We do have the prerogative during this 90-day period if we find serious asbestos or any other environmental concerns to cancel this contract during this 90-day window.
Thank you for that explanation, President Farmer. With that said, then we will proceed with, you will proceed with our authorization of you to finalize the negotiations of this and sign all the related documents needed to accomplish it. That brings us down to Agenda Item Number 12, Consideration and Possible Action With Regard to Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment, Duties, Discipline, or Dismissal of a Public Officer or Employee. We do not have any action items with regard to those topics today. And that brings us down to number 13. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I so move.
And a second? All in favor, raise your hand, please. We are adjourned.